Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Thank you for being here this evening and thank you for your interest in county government. Since it's the first Monday in December, we do things just a little bit differently. At the first regular meeting in December of the board each year, it's time for the board to elect a new chairman. And with that, I will simply open the floor for nominations.
Mr. Decker, I would nominate our current chairman, Mr. Kevin Corbin. Kevin has done a good job of leadership this morning, been consistent. We've got several things we have to do to keep him in some good leadership. We had our bad the place is land nomination, so we're going to vote Kevin.
Would there be a second? Would there be any other nominations? Here in nine, I would ask the board to vote with your right hand. Senator, your favor of this on this motion. So, may I? I'm saying. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your confidence. Been a good year. I would, we do need to elect a vice chairman, and the vice chairman will be to serve in the absence of chairman. And if we're able to do it with the chairman, it's neat. So, I would open the floor for nominations for vice chairman of the board. The interest of partnership on the question of building, I guess, question. Second, a motion by Christian Hager for Christian to be the vice chairman. Any further nominations in discussion? If you're not, all the favor raise your right hand. Vote, and motion passes. Bill?
We could have Phil in here, too. Thank you for what I appreciate.
We have the item number four is the examination official bond for public officials in Macon County. Michael, if you want to address that.
Yes, sir, I can. Obviously, this is one of the, again, this is one of those things that we did each year at this time of the year. Finance director has reviewed this. There was one slight modification that had to be made to one of the bond numbers, but otherwise, Mr. Chairman, everything is in order, and we recommend that you approve.
And these, just for the public record, these are the bonds for the county tax officer, the tax collector, the county sheriff, and you will see those detailed listing in your brochure there. Any questions about that or a motion to approve that would be settled. So, we have motion to second in discussion. If you're not in all the favors, say aye. Aye, opposed, and motion passes. Gentlemen, we have to, according to North Carolina general statutes, we have to adopt a meeting schedule for the year for 2014 coming up. And I think we have a, thanks, sir. Yeah, and it's a ten-year pre-packet, and also we have that listed. The only questions I think we would need to answer, the November meeting, if we go when the second Tuesday falls on better days, and so we might consider moving that up to the eighteenth, is that the next Tuesday?
That's right. I would ask that we consider also moving the January meeting.
And that was left blank, too, and I would mean where that. I know it's just Christian week, and I don't believe it is too good if the, if Christian Bill indicating that he needs to be gone knows that on the, is that the fourteenth, please, please? I'm trying to get the phone. I believe the meeting would be at November.
That's right. The meeting will be on the fourteenth. I just have to be in Raleigh at seven o'clock on the fifteenth.
So, I would suggest we meet the seventh through the twenty-first. I don't know if it makes a great deal of difference. And I would suggest that.
As long as we publish this in sufficient time to meet, if you want to do January the seventh, we just need to make sure we.
We'd get after it.
Yes, we'd have to make sure we post that in sufficient time.
That is my anniversary. I'm going to have to go create a new issue.
It's the twenty-third.
Twenty-first might be advised.
For one reason, that's more an attorney.
My attorney says you're an attorney. Okay. What do you know, Jim? Probably a January, a little cluttered at the time of the year. I would suggest the twenty-first would be.
Several other points in the proposed resolution referring to January, July, 2014, the twenty-first would need to be inserted into each board.
Gentlemen, as the county attorney explained to me, the board has established a regular meeting date of the second Tuesday of each month at six p.m. The only question comes is when you want to change that, and that's why you have the resolution in front of you to see.
Technically, you have a schedule set included to set in those situations where it falls on a holiday and we can go over to the next business day. That is fine, and will work for the ensuing year, but if you have things that you need to change, as is indicated tonight, and this resolution would be the mechanism that we need to accomplish it, one thing that you need to keep in mind though is this speaks only for the year 2014. And you would need to make sure you get on the calendars to accomplish this again in December.
Gentlemen, with that said, it would be possible for January, January first or November eighteenth, if both papers vote. If so, I would add motion to approve the regular meeting schedule. It's a move. The motion by Christian to take it, second by Bill. Any discussion? If you're not in all the favors, say aye. Aye, opposed, and motion passes. Thank you all.
That I assume is the resolution.
That's right. Correct, that's right. So, that will be our regular meeting schedule, and we'll meet otherwise as needed. Under announcements, Mr. Pat Andrew, give a statement.
Christian Hager. Always, we don't see before the holidays come, have the holidays, everyone here and make the campaign.
What else say?
Mr. Chairman, I, if you want to put it in the bill, I just have a report from the RPO meeting in Cherokee. We do have what's coming to reveal to you in Macon County, so if you want to put it back, just put it on the agenda, it's very short. Which is very short.
Put that in the reports.
Yeah, that'd be great, right after.
Okay. Change the agenda to go flat. Any other announcements we should take?
Yes, earlier this week, we had our initial meeting with the mission critical partners, who is the communications company that we hired to review our 901 system, the radio communications. I think it off the great start, and I'm pleased with our results.
So, they started working? Yes. As lays on to the red board, our red board, I did ask Seth Adams to come tonight, and we do have, I think, just the appropriate announcement regarding our part of grant application retained for the apartment's property.
Okay. In November twenty-second, Macon County was awarded a part of grant in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. They had to write out four and a half million dollars to give out, and they deemed our project well worthy of fully funded for this year. They have a contract in the mail to us, I found out after we spoke today, that watch the sign and get back to them. And basically, once the thing, the ball get rolling, which started already, it's February first, they don't give us five hundred thousand dollars. They just have a, kind of a loan. We'll send them bills, and they pay out of that kind of construction. But that's really good news for us and the group.
Tell us how many people have applied for a part of that?
There was forty-eight left. There was over eighty to start with. They funded a lot of little ones, the first go around and very big ones, and I said we were very high ranked from the get-go, and they.
Didn't feel we were only seven of the people that got funded?
Yes, yeah, we were one of seven.
And Seth, just in case you missed it, there was only four and a half million dollars to be given out, and we got five hundred thousand, so we got a large chunk of that, which we did. I know that. I talked to several folks in the governor's office, and Seth made a lot of phone calls, and they prioritized our project.
Yeah, they had, and luckily, we went, because they had done, basically, reappointed that whole board. So, a lot of those folks saw the project for the first time, going into that meeting night, so they had the opportunity to speak to three of them that weren't familiar with the project, thought they had a little brief synopsis of it right at the beginning. So, it was good that we were there, and thank you for, and so Ron, for all your work prior to.
Because the favorite work was, as I said, all these, one little, you know, they checked the joneses pretty hard.
Oh, yeah, they did.
They did what? Check the joneses. You're a bird idiot. But I mean, but one little thing out of place, so we would have been kicked back.
Oh, yeah.
So, that's thanks to you and people worked on the grant.
Thank you. Now, we're here kind of asking for clues of direction on kind of where to go from here.
I talked to, just full disclosure, I talked to Seth after the fact that we got the grant, and I think you guys would be in agreement, rather than just fly into this thing. I think we need a plan. I think we need to hear Seth. My suggestion is, it lays on to your red board, would be if you give Matt Mason a planner, let's come up with a plan. I know we have to do certain things, you applied for the grant.
Yeah.
You have to complete these three all bills, or certain things that have to be done with that money, but I just have questions like, I talked to Mr. Penland, if you can get some mission rating out there, if you can get all the ready at one time, would it be a lot cheaper, those kind of things? So, how do we spend that money, what can we do with it? I think we'd like to follow, anyway. I don't think any vote, no new things yet, but there's more.
No, in fact, we need to see the contract that the grant body is providing, so we know the sub-proceeding, what is required. But I think it'd be pretty brutal to vote beyond just getting some point here, you know, planning sort of.
And all I'd like to do is just ask them to come back to us, a January meeting, a February meeting, I'm not sure what time frame it is, but let's have a plan and see what makes sense to do, and that must be why the school.
And I think they're going to ask for that, and also, with a part of the grant process to change.
That moves that one, you know, like that. They all have infected.
Yeah, no, we have certain things that we have to deal with that money, but they're, obviously, that's a small.
But that's a good problem to have, is a plan.
It is.
I agree, good problem.
It is, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate your hard work on that, Mr. Penland. Your profession is basketball game. I can see that look on your face.
See it.
Or you can save the rest of our meeting if you'd like to.
Okay, okay, the next one.
That was all I had as far as announcements. Anything else? Mr. Chairman, it might be appropriate to note that the finance director is en route to a budget conference, and that is the reason she is not with us. If we could, let's stand that we're all determined, the signs are together, and get them last, Mr. Hager, he would, ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and indubitable, and just as strong as law.
And we do not have a public hearing scheduled for tonight, and we did not have anyone to sign up for the public comment. Is anyone here that didn't sign up to collect, speak, it's not only you. Everybody here, everybody here. The next item is the adjustments and approval of the agenda. Does any board member have anything you'd like to add on the leak in the agenda or adjust?
Christian Hager, anything to read? Christian doesn't have two items, everyone has their own item under the course, and they've less than a minute about the board elections.
Okay. I don't even need that, Christian Bill, last moment ago, I made a note, didn't talk about RPO, let's make that item twelve B, and then we'll make it item twelve C, the board elections.
I have an item left ahead, item fourteen C. I'd go ours to discussion about the disposal of the college school.
What about the one?
Place disposal of the college school. We have the obligation to find jobs, and they're employed within our area. Ninety percent of the emergency service personnel, first responders, are people that we train, that touch your lives, that touch the lives of all those citizens. We also realize that as a government agency, they'll receive a nineteen, almost nearly twenty percent annual return on investment through the college. Also, students, except by twenty-two percent, are graded and returned with their education. SREV Southern Regional Education Bureau was looking at some of their statistics that actually just came out. The jobs over the next ten years, there's five point five million jobs that are going to be nationwide over the next ten years. Take the benchmark of today's job, eighteen percent increase of new jobs to a firm requiring associate or vocational certificate for some level of college. And I put that slide in because I think the importance of that is the only two degree that are more apt to have those jobs are professional, the doctorate and the masters. But associate degree, valuable for the money, and the job market that's there in the next ten years will be an extremely important aspect for the future growth of the college, and the college in particular, if anything, if you count it. For every dollar a student invests at SEC, they'll receive four eighty-four, and that comes back to some of that twenty percent that we showed, that we realized earlier, in higher future earnings. Every tax dollar invested at SEC shows a dollar thirty-five in earnings in retirement. So, we are a major economic catalyst and engine within the community that we serve in Macon County, and we just want to continue to provide that excellent service, and then also provide the additional access that we know that we will need to answer program authorings and to deal with the population that will be coming, upcoming throughout this. This slide here, again, I'm looking at value on dollars. And if you look at the private school, this is tuition, SEC's tuition is seventy-two dollars per day. If you look at public school, universities, it's five thirty-four, and if you look at private, it's nearly nine hundred. The dollar value of what we can provide as a community college to our communities, just it really can be touched. So, we just, I wanted to put that in so that we could all understand the savings that it provides. A student that has the ability to live at home, go to the community college for the first two years, and earn their associate's degree, I always say it's like giving yourself a twenty-five thousand dollar scholarship. Because if you take off and go downstate or to a state university, it's going to cost you something around fifteen thousand plus dollars to go to that institution. And if you stay at home, you're able to continue life the way that you did, it's going to cost you about twenty-five hundred to two thousand dollars, plus maybe a little bit of books and investment here and there. If you're looking at five to six thousand dollars, or six to seven thousand dollars for a two-year degree, it's supposed to be thirty thousand plus for those three years, which is really all your general and your transfer stuff. That's different than the public safety and training, the two-year terminal brief that we also offer. But it's an important factor here, as all of us should realize as we visit with our community folks. Getting into the vision of our master plan, in this current slide, what you'll see is the existing public safety and training complex there. On my screens, on the far left side, and I assume you're seeing it the same way I'm at, you've got the UPS building in front, and then above that, you'd have the driving range, and above the driving range is some vacant area that is there right now. Above safety and training complexes, I mentioned earlier, with all the new programs that they would like to bring forward, and the ability of the National Park Service, the seasonal workforce and training, the additional forces that they have the opportunity to provide, this facility does not meet their needs. This facility is roughly fifteen thousand square feet. They also have four of the buildings there that they try to accommodate some of the training issues in. They have a firing range that is now located as a network firing range in Jackson County that, you know, they have limited, they have travel time, they have limited instructional time, they have weather, and clinical weather that they may have to deal with. So, it makes it very difficult for them to have some of those training challenges that they experience along the way, but they do an outstanding job. Our students and graduates are ready and prepared and do well when they do have a plan on a job. But this is about fifteen thousand square feet, as I mentioned, of building space, and you can kind of see the black line, as it outlines. I don't remember the directional aspect of it, but there's a vacant lot, kind of where there's some cars parked right there in front of that existing public safety and training spot, that is almost all boulders and rocks and solid, just almost, I mean, it'd be very difficult to do anything with. So, we did public forums. Mr. Gall also visited with the public and law enforcement agencies, and we took a look at our need assessment of what capacity do we need to be able to provide the necessary training that would be adequate for his program and college's program. What we came up with, with Mr. Watson, was that he took a look at that existing property that we have, and we tried to figure out what would be the best use. And as you can see, phase one there is a building that wraps around the existing public safety and training complex. And we took the rock pile, boulder, and we went ahead and did some parking on there. And then above the driving range, where county records indicate the likelihood of archaeological studies that would, you know, reveal artifacts, it's my understanding, you cannot build a permanent structure on top of that, but the pavement of the driving range is not considered necessarily permanent structure, but we have permission to be able to have that driving range there. So, the probability of one A, which is an indoor shooting range or firing range, would be highly unlikely because of the archaeological digs that we've invented, with all indications of the paperwork that we have and the knowledge base. But more importantly, if you look at the first building that wraps around the existing public safety and training complex, that's it. We have no other space to grow, and what we're looking at, and our data shows us, that about every eight years, five to eight years, we would need to expand and add an additional building to accommodate the needs of the people coming into the cul drains that we are offering. This building is about thirty-five thousand square feet, roughly, and it would accommodate the next five to eight years. That meets potentially present-day needs, does not meet future needs. So, the responsibility charged on me as the president and our administrative team and our board trustees is to create a vision and to see what we can do in the future, long after I'm standing here for twenty years down the road, and long after the group had the opportunity to move on to other things. So, this only gives us about five to eight years worth of growth, and then we're, you know, we come back and recreate another master plan. So, as we continue to move through this, this is the annex. That's about five thousand square feet, plus or minus. And again, as I mentioned, we've already been asked on several occasions if there would be possibilities of us relocating to another location. That hasn't worked, we have partners incorporating, we've flexed a little bit here and there, but we have an option to create that on this new master plan, and to give you that space back and to incorporate it into the master plan. Presently, if you look at this slide, what you see here is the Grove Center complex, the one building that's in the yellow. The yellow line indicates what property the Southwestern Community College has to work with at present day. The blue naturally is the library that's out there, and then just kind of on the backside of that, or in front of that, is the early college building. Then the red indicates county property that you have in your possession. So, I'm going to kind of sequence. The next slide shows phase one of what we consider to be the master plan and the vision of Macon County's Southwestern Community College campus. Building number one would be an addition to the Grove building that we mentioned earlier. That building would be about thirty-five thousand square feet, plus or minus. We have a science makeshift lab room in our present facility that we team-keep with early college, but it's very difficult to do hard sciences such as chemistry or physics in that particular science room. It's more up to our soft sciences that we sometimes refer to as our biology, general biology classes, anatomy, physiology, geology, botany, courses of that nature. So, we have a need to expand to be able to offer the curriculum that is very similar to the curriculum that we're offering on the Jackson campus, and we can't, so we can't accommodate all the offerings to the level that we have on the Jackson campus, but we feel there is a need for here on the Macon campus. One A would be a replacement building that is approximately fifty thousand square feet. When I say replacement building, it incorporates, if you recall the first slide that I showed you, where we wrapped the building around the existing public safety and training complex, worth of about fifteen thousand square feet. The addition was thirty-five thousand to meet their needs. This one building accommodates both those buildings and becomes a fifty thousand square feet new public safety and training complex, which, as you can see, is just slightly down the, I guess that's the ravine right there. If you've been out to the Grove Center, you know there's a little draw, a ravine right there. This is on one side of the ravine, and then on the other side of the ravine, the draw is the gen ed science classroom building for our general education curriculum. One B is a, the request of the master plan to put an indoor firing range, and that building gets situated where that's at in the future. Like I said, we have an outdoor range, we'll find its weather, that range is in Jackson County, instructional time, drive time. I, lack of time and knowing that people may want to go to a basketball game or a bowling later on, we have a whole list of the agencies that utilize our firing range, the person takes out and supports them in their continuing education, from Andrews to Cherokee, Graham to Bounder, to Spring County, to Macon County, to the State Highway, the Division of Corrections, FBI, FDI, et cetera, to come out and use that firing range to train, to encourage them to do that. One C is a facility that houses our DMS and our fire truck, that we felt that we could partner with Macon County and allow Macon County the opportunity to have a fire truck or a staging station out in this area also. So, that would be a partnership for us to be able to look at. Then the next phase, another, now, remember, this is the first eight years, or the next eight years. Eight years down the road, ten years down the road, phase two is another extension of the Grove Center building that just wraps around and follows, I guess, the Silra form that was located on that building. And there's an extension of classroom instructional space of building two-way for the public safety and training complex. Twenty-five years down the road, there's an additional complex or additional instructional building for public safety and training. Now, this diagram is. Now, this diagram gives you the full view of the master plan that takes us out about twenty-five years. Phase one takes us out for the next eight to ten. Phase two takes us out to the next ten to twenty, and then we go out to about twenty-five years for this. What this master plan creates for Macon County is a Macon County campus, where all the training and educational facilities are at this one location. It has a library right there that we utilize for our students to go across and take advantage of those opportunities for study and reports and research papers. And you have Macon County Urban College on this facility also. Everything's located in one area. It creates a campus atmosphere for us, so we're not to start all over. And this provides growth, most importantly, for the next twenty-five years. And I know you're going to have some questions. I'm going to try to answer some of those questions, hopefully. The next slide shows that we did do an archaeological scrape. It was clean. There is no evidence of any historic discovery of any occupation limit to that project. So this link, we're in great shape. We already kind of pre-assessed that, so we would know where we're at. This photo demonstrates all the buildings that have been included in that scrape are clean in the areas of which they did some of that discovery. So we're in great shape with that. And I thank you for your time, your support, and my request is that you take this under advisement and consideration for us to be able to move forward with our master plan for Macon County and the citizens of Macon County for their future, for our future, together. And I request that we come back at a time in the near future to discuss the opportunity of, and I guess what I did miss and failed to give you on that, if I could go back to the very last three slides prior to, is that the one? The one with the purple, the very, no, the very last slide.
Oh, yes.
Well, I didn't miss it, but what I failed to ask on the very last slide, if you'll turn to this diagram. It's the second tab. I wish I could pull that back. Number phase three, it will be phasing plans, siler survey plans, and it's under, it's under methodology, it's under the methodology tab. I guess the very last.
Sure. Immediately before the archaeology was set at that time.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay. That's the one, yes, that's. Consideration of the master plan overall, I guess the important part is, what you see in yellow is what the college already has to work with. What the master plan would incorporate in the purple or area is the lines that are drawn out from the library, and that goes out to that direction, then comes all the way down around in front of the phase three building, and then connects back up to the college property, which I believe is about nineteen possible potential papers for the intent of use of that property for a Macon County college campus for Southwestern Community College. So that was a pretty interesting point to make, what we got is the intent of coming back for consideration of use of that nineteen majors for the expansion and creation of the Macon County campus of our master plan and Southwestern Community.
Chairman, I might add that that allows for the library to expand out to the west along with its parking lot, and also hooks up the trail for use by the college in their, in their National Park Service training program, because their intent was to try and have a number of campsite-like atmospheres sites back in there along the trail.
Questions, thoughts, consideration for?
The idea is to take, if you're going to, the land is the property used at it to collaborate for money.
I think that's what we were able to do in the future, not try to find the past with the original building. Of course, we're trying to get first steps first, and that's the new plan.
I think this would have to review. I don't know, I don't think it turned over where we did, deed to the historical society property down next to the river.
I talked with Mike Watson a little bit about some of those issues of conservation easements, as well as the due power of easements, and I think he's attempted to address them in these problems.
The due power has been shown, and I'm not exactly sure where the conservation easement is, but I believe it's below.
I've got some questions.
Would you suggest, I'd like a half-day workshop, just for your board and ours?
We could do that and have a, you know, even our executive cabinet meet with the board commissioners and do that discussion. Mr. Watson, this is on cad, so we can adjust lines and adjust portions as needed. We're just wanting to try to meet the needs of our public safety and training, and also for curriculum design. So half-day workshop to answer any and all questions and have that conversation. We'll look at this, it's just time issue, and then come back at earliest of minutes, end of January, first of February. We've had a meeting time for where we can move forward and continue to make progress with this project. Does that work for you? And as you review it, if you all have any questions, please feel free to give Mike Watson a comment, give me a call. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you may have, or get some answers for work there.
Would the initial plans for the existing?
We would. In that conversation with county commissioners, our intent would be to turn that back in over to the county, so that they would have that if their industrial park were of extension. This is an industrial property we need to have in the future also.
And we'll pull out there.
So it provides an opportunity for, you know, recruiting and patrolling the community as a senior. We'd keep the burden building and the driving range, and keep that location, but it's kind of hard to do all the time.
Hopefully, we can continue the discussion about the driving range. It appears more and more likely that could be a real benefit for a lot of residents. Of course, we came back, we still have the hundred and eighty thousand dollars paid. So it looks like more and more against, and I give RPO before hearing many, it looks more and more like we're really feeling that a lot of our citizens in the county have CBL access. So hopefully, we've asked the state out of Raleigh yesterday, they would do some of that. So, but anyway, we'll keep that.
All right. Well, I appreciate your time, and we'll take that and that consideration and discussion. Also.
Thank you for what you've done, and thank you to your.
Thank you.
What a great initiative, Southwestern is to our community and provide education for our young folks. I can tell my own daughter, we're, that's the appropriate group of occupational therapists that support us, but closest place would be South College, actually, it's good, that problem is, it's going to cost us about twenty-five thousand dollars a year, which adds up to a five-year program. And now Southwestern will start that program. So I say yes.
You were going to figure out a little circle lamp.
Five thousand is better than five. Every time, that's pretty. So community college is a great, great partner.
No, we do appreciate you all.
Curtis, are you booked up? I mean, all your classes are full now, just everything.
The National Park Service, I'll elaborate on that just a moment.
Oh, absolutely.
I was on a conference call today with the other colleges across the country that offer that program, and several of the colleges were asking if anybody had overflow to send students their way. And for us, we've been fortunate that we've had a waiting list for a number of years, and we're already booking classes for the fall of two thousand fourteen into two thousand fifteen. The folks are dedicating their time to come to Public Safety Training Center for the program, just because we have established history and we have the support of our county members who house these folks. But we've graduated two thousand three hundred seventy graduates since that program started in seventy-eight, and it's just done nothing for Trump. What the Park Service is going to do is they're going to reduce the number of colleges that offer that, because they want to make it more of a federal law enforcement training program, so that when they finish that program, they can get straight to work for the National Park Service without doing seasonal or part-time. They can become permanent rangers, because they have such a backlog on those. So that is something that's going to remain there. They've got a lot of rangers retiring in the future, and they're looking to fill this position. They did a eleven-year study on where their permits were hired, and Southwestern was on a shelf by itself as far as where they hired their permanent rangers from. But we don't advertise over on our website, and every one of them attempts in, says, "How did you hear about the program? Well, the other ranger told me this is where I need to come to get my training." So it's a tradition that we have, we're proud of that, and it's because we're serving our community, we're a figure of that. We look at it as anybody that we train could be working on our family, that could be helping our family, and your family.
If you haven't got a chance, go to one of Curtis' graduations.
Please do.
I mean, they're from all over, how many are there? All over, there's a big volume to Curtis and his group.
Just to add a very quick note to the fall of two thousand nine, we went up to DC, and we were first accredited Federal Law Enforcement Agency Training Association for federal accreditation. So that's testimony of Curtis and his group of how well they do their job and working with the federal government also. There's lots of opportunities.
You thought him used better than you went.
They're full.
Well, it's our pleasure to serve those who serve. We're blessed, we appreciate it.
Thank you for what you do, and thank you to Southwestern, for the work. I know we need to look to the future, and I failed to introduce one person in the room, and I'm sitting here looking around thinking, twenty-five-year plan, chances are fairly good that none of us are going to be decision-makers at that point, but Derek Roan probably will be, and he's our new county manager, and there's upside to being twenty-eight years old, Derek. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
There's an upside to that. So he is our new county manager, and will be very involved in future plans in this county. He at least tells me that he has every intention to be here the rest of his career, so he'll probably be here at any time. So Derek, welcome.
Thanks, sir. I appreciate it.
Officially to your first meeting, and if you'd talk to Dr. Thomas, maybe set us up the time that our boards can get together.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, and gentlemen, if you need to go in, if you need to go to basketball game, you can go to the hall. That's right. Or if you want to stay, please do that.
Want to go over the new road?
I don't know. That's.
The next item is, please be able to question on the agenda, the RPO.
It's a rural county organization, which now everything is on point, it's getting new chairman, and it's changed on the Secretary of DOT. So some of the roads we had to look before, we carry forward, still pushing for those things, as the money, of course, has tightened up in the DOT, especially in rural counties. Some of the things we didn't get kicked back, some things we need to get approved, so we're talking about the positive. In two thousand fourteen, this is what's to be left, the contract, the big contract that they had to be left, is the Pacing Lang and sixty-four West. That's all the way that, that Pacing Lang started out after the bridge is in the foreland, which started up the mountain. And Pacing Lang will continue to the Little Fort East at the foreland. Everybody knows where that is. I think that's Roger Road, or is it? It'll be just a Pacing Roger Road somewhere in that vicinity. They have well found a place in Highlands, so the truck is coming out of Highlands. We have a little tarp for a place, it's a little bit different. We start crossing that property if there it is in Franklin. So, but the money has been set aside, and what we've really pushed for for a long, long time is for school buses and a lot of other things, is Bud Creek Road. Bud Creek Road has become a bypass, the valve that you make yourself. So what we did get was one point five mile, that's the first one point five mile, you turn off sixty-four. The white line, up and up there, we, we, I was so bored, we weren't getting part of it, they did go in there and build a shelf, but the white line is basically, if you miss the white line, you're off the road. So that's one point five miles, it's going to be a very expensive thing. Some things that we did get pushed back, that we're still pushing for, number one is the Boulevard and McDonald's, calling it from the red light right there down to the fire grounds, that there's more dangerous piece of road in the Lake County, I don't know where that would be. So that got pushed aside. Another thing that was on the horizon, and the community had a big say in it, was, remember they talked about a truck out at, on the bypass, and it's looking at Chevrolet, at the Cap Creek Road, which you, you're part of that conversation. So a lot of us just couldn't figure out why it might be safer for a transfer truck to come up at six hundred feet, cross two lanes of traffic, then cross two more lanes of traffic, to turn back and go. We just couldn't figure that out. The engineers in Raleigh had it figured out, we just couldn't figure it out. So we objected today, and we suggested a turn of lane with a series of red lights. So that has been, it's still in discussion, so, but anything you have with the roads, they are low. The first time, we have no secondary road maintenance money, basically zero. But if you go over a road in a dangerous situation, especially where a school bus is the best reason, we still have a pot of money for a school bus route that's deemed dangerous. They don't want, the DOT don't want that. If it's us driving on the road, there's a pot of business. School bus, if you have something that we can bring forward, if you'd like to film the RPO meeting, the next one will be next March, what is this? It'll be December, January, February, the third Monday, February, Cherokee. So Mike is chairman of the RPO, I was chairman of the RPO for the previous two years, so if it is a different world with DOT, and if you can understand the point of system, you've done good. That's what we know, it will be left.
Thank you, I appreciate you representing us on that. Appreciate the information. Richard Tate requested to share some information about the board of elections.
Just kind of giving you all a forewarning that Ken Bishop, who has the board of elections, is going to be coming to see us maybe next month, three months after. As a lot of things in the state, when they made the voter ID changes, made some other change to our elections, we're the ones that picked up that. One of the things that they did was they shortened the timeframe, early voting is going to be open, but they did change the amount of hours. So what's going to happen is we're going to end up, we're going to read their regulations, we're going to have to have two early voting sites. So we've got to pay demand those, we've got to pay the lookout, we've got to pay somebody to look after IDs now. Now that's how things are. Now, that's, I think, so that's just an unbudgeted items that comes with ours. A lot of the paperwork is changing, so there's going to be a whole lot of big forms to be printed. Doesn't sound like much, but you start printing about a thousand, so there's a lot to it. When you open up a one-stop voting place, you've got to think of such things as telephone service, changing out the locks, there's state requirements on the, anyway, I just wanted to give you all a heads up that she will be coming. We're going to be taking all this funds.
What about the request that we had from Matt Bateman? How'd you feel about Matt Bateman?
Things are in pretty good shape down there, and that's one item that excites me about what Southwestern was doing, does is that maybe we can move them out of the hole in the basement, potentially move them over there to get them the room they need. I took a tour in that facility downstairs, all the closets, all the rooms, and I recommend that maybe you should all have the opportunity to get to it, because it is absolutely delightful.
And they have the lock, the, the people really have that lock in there.
There is, there's questions about that, about you guys' keys, but I have the stickers. Anyway, I just asked her if she'd probably come to give us a presentation on that, sometimes saying, "I'd love to be one of those to there for a bit," to look into.
Thank you, Commissioner Tate. That's all. Under old business, like I had no message, is that correct? Okay. Well, that's Mexico. New business, nine-one-one phone, the polar upgrade project, emergency management, I think they can, hot secret, right here, to present some information. And Commissioner Tate, this is our latest on to that department, if you jump in, where you feel like this is.
I just, before we get started, I want to commend David and Todd for their work with us. Todd in particular, outstanding job of keeping us up to speed yearly, especially in the last couple days of what's going on with this communication. With that, I'll pass off to David.
Well, thanks for the last meeting. I'll actually, I'll go back to you. Obviously, I told you that that wasn't going to happen. I'm here tonight to talk to you and ask you to go create some funds for our nine-one-one fund, to provide public access. But to prelude that, I want to try to give you a little history of where we came from, where we are, and where that funding comes from, to start here. Not good as it shores again, I know we all want to go home, but, 1993, in October of 1993, we changed over from what most people call seven-digit number over to nine-one-one system. And that is much easier for the systems of Lake County to us to get accessible, emergency services, into the three-digit number. That is when we called our first phone switch, which is anybody that's named Crawford. Now, there's going to be a test later, but Crawford is a name that I can keep coming back to him. At that point, when we went to the new nine-one-one system, we doubled everything. We had one for dispatch drones, and at that point, it was a two-year special for sure. A year later, D nine-one-one comes along, and it's an enhanced version of the nine-one-one system. We went from being able to dial three-digit numbers and connecting with someone to a system, which is a little better than caller ID is today. They could dial nine-one-one, and the dispatch on the other end would actually, you would at least get a reading of the phone number. Eventually advanced up where we got the owner of the phone, his or her name would pop up on the screen. We have advanced a little further to that, and we've gotten now addresses that we've come up with. That's before we came up with the nine-one-one addressing system. Further on down the line, we came into the super advanced D nine-one-one, and where the later tapes are there. Each step we've done has increased our ability to serve the public, and it increases the knowledge of dispatch on the other end, which makes it easier for the public, that they call in, they don't have to give us as much information before we have our appointment to help them. In 1994, our call volume was 12,000 calls, that's how many were generated into the computer system. In 2013, as of this afternoon, we've had 32,000 calls. That's an increase of about 267 percent. And as of right now, we have not increased the staff in that department, just to work with the dispatch. So, that's actually, at our community territory. Let me get back to what I'm, this is not, we just recently upgraded everything in our nine-one-one system, in our call center, our radios are brand new, we've opened up a backup site, we have upgraded our computer dispatch center, we've got numerous orders. In that, we consulted with experts on the phone side, on the computer side, and they were, in their opinion, that this switch would be adaptable to the new equipment that we're buying, we thought it would be adaptable, so we didn't plan on replacing it. We planned on keeping it and adapting it to what we needed. Further we got into the project, it became very apparent, as the new piece of equipment we installed, each time we had tried to adapt that piece of equipment, due to that new piece, we came into trouble. For some reason, we couldn't get the parts, we couldn't adapt it, we couldn't make it fit for the piece of equipment. Looking further into the company, and as they tried to upgrade that piece of equipment, we realized that that isn't obsolete piece of equipment. And Simon is the one who told us, he found one, one more working in the United States that has this, it's the same with ours, except it's on exhibit, it's something else. That's the only place for the time parts. At that point, we realized that a new phone switch is still have to come in and play in this new upgrade. And that was almost seventeen, six, eight months ago, when we realized we're going to have to buy the board in time. That is when we came to you. The phone switch will integrate, when you, when someone calls nine-one-one, it integrates all of that information that comes in, and every day, they're adding more, the technology gets better, they're gathering more information from this call, and it populates into a computer program, so dispatch will know who to send, where to send it, and it gathers, it's a gathering of information, and dispersed it to the other.
What does it do now with this one?
Our new one, if you will allow us to purchase that, the new one will go from what we have right now is, we get phone numbers, person's, the owner's name, we go over the white line and write a letter, phones now, it gives us a one on map, which is two-dimensional, it will also give us a one on map, which is three-dimensional, it gives the call history. That's what we're currently doing. What the new system will do is bring us into the future of cell phones, which will give us a field of text back and forth. You can send that on a new device, or we're just testing it now, where if you're out in the field and you send a text message, you're, you're hiding your hand.
You can get us sent pictures, that's what it works for.
This will work for the future, we'll be able to perceive and send pictures. So, if someone in the field, one of the first responders has a rec, perceives a rec, pulls up on rec, they'll be able to send a picture of the rec.
Gives you the location of that.
It will give the location. In a reverse part of that, we'll be able to send pictures out. Here, for me, with our Star Program, where we have individuals that are listening to Star Program disabilities, we have their pictures on file, or if someone's lost, we'll be able to send that picture to the field as a responder, you know, on the phone, or some, rather than running pictures on a pop-up machine and sending it over.
The odds were, I think, they have, they're working with the business for people to have cameras, like, it's like Robin, it's been just a matter of convenience, they have that thing, and then patrol cars.
And soon as you can capture anything, you can replace it.
Amazing.
This will, this will actually bring us up to current standard, they're coming in beyond. I'll get to this one, if there is no, we're not asking for any funds from general funding, or from contingency funding, because this should all be funded out of our current nine-one-one fund balance, but the remaining lump sum, they donate to the emergency corporation, not a nine-one-one board. We've gone out to a secret one, they've received our location, and we've given down their price to a bidding process, but the sleeves that we're looking at buying is 544,000 dollars. We've gone through the broker bid process, we've decided on the company, and then we decided to go out and see how we're going to play with it. With, a lot of people work very hard to support all in nine-one-one board, and through their work with nine-one-one board, they have agreed to make up the remaining balance that we're going to, that's 300,000 dollars. We've been placing 195,000 forward out of the fund now.
Tell us about all of that funds.
Nine-one-one funds are a surcharge that are on your phone. They've changed over the years, they started, started out as a one-dollar charge once a month for landline, and they didn't actually charge cell phones. As cell phones became more popular, they realized there was missing revenue, so they started charging any cents on cell phones, and a dollar only per month for the pure landline. The way they collect it has changed over the years, it's still gone through the phone company, and it used to be the phone company that dispersed it back to the county, and for round numbers, at least if we collected a hundred dollars, and if it's a nine-one-one fund, that money in Macon County money would come back to Macon County, and we would be able to spend the Macon County dollars enough. They have changed that. And the funds are now collected by the phone company, dispersed to the nine-one-one board, which is in the local, they go to the board, and those funds are, our Macon County funds are locked in with every other county in the state. And we budget growth processes and projects to the nine-one-one board, and then they fund us poker as we need. If we don't spend, I want to say if we don't spend enough money, but if we don't spend the money, then they don't give it. So, in reality, if we don't spend our money, Mecklenburg will be spending Macon County money, or Plaquemine will be spending Macon County. I would like to be spending Macon County money in Macon County.
So, the difference, what you used to do, what you do now, it used to come back, and that goes into a big pot.
It goes into a big pot.
And you have to ask for a question, you have a lot of fees, and then you can give the money for it.
We have an ongoing, evolving broad budget that we fund things every year, and it's managed contracts, it's updating computers, as a replacement computer, equipment, nine-one-one system. We can use that money along, and those are all regulated by that board, and we have to pass it to them before they're allowed to spend the money. We have pass it to the board that's gone through their funding committee, and we did go to Charlotte about a week, and they're basically used to, and they're back to normal. My request to this board would be that we, that you allow us to spend eighty percent of our fund balance. In labor, it's roughly 198,000 dollars, along with the nine-one-one board money, kind of up to 544,000 to purchase this phone switch. There is a, there is a certain urgency involved, we will figure it out.
Any operation?
We have had that conversation, and we're looking at ninety-eight, once the contract is completed.
Ninety-eight, ninety-eight, ninety-eight. Is this the switch, man?
We talked about your fund balance, you said that the nine-one-one board, the state board now funds a handle for all nine-one-one money. Is the Indian nation, or nine-one-one local fund balance, where did that money, how did we accumulate that balance?
Yeah, we, we, if I tell you a figure, it will be wrong, but it's in the neighborhood of 325,000 dollars a year comes to Macon County for us to use for nine-one-one purposes. And there's a very short list of things that you can buy with that money. At the end of the year, if we have some money left open, when the money was pretty flowing, straight back to the county, or in the other counties, the restriction on the money was so great, and the money that was coming in was so great, that the counties started to build very large fund balances, and the state recognizes that that money was, oh, better served in their coffers, sitting in their coffers than in ours, just to be honest with you, they were better folks. So, we are allowed to build a certain amount of fund balance, but they don't want us to go extort, and we plan to submit them later, hopefully in January or February, that will allow us to build our fund balance above the twenty percent, so that we will be able to hold enough, so when this piece of, this piece of place, or another piece that could be replaced, we won't have to go and ask them for more purposes.
You mentioned spending money in Lake County, this 544, one of our, that will be spent in Lake County.
All of that money will be spent for a phone switch that will service Macon County.
But the money, no local companies buy it either, though?
No, they don't.
So, all that 544 will be spent out in county?
Correct. But if we don't ask for that money, that money could easily have gone to Mecklenburg County, or another county, which they're going to be building by this as well, and we wouldn't have gotten money for the service.
Ideally, we would never need this money, and they'd stop taking the money, having taken our phone bills, whatever. You know, I don't like to hear if, you know, what we're saying, let's just spend it when we've got it.
I understand, I understand.
If we don't need it, let's don't use it, regardless of what they need.
This is, we definitely need this.
What puzzles, you said the experts have been trying to integrate this system?
The one we have right now.
Yeah, the water system with current equipment.
Yes.
They didn't realize that can't be done, if this thing's an antique?
We had a conversation, and they assured me that there shouldn't be any problem integrating this into our new stuff.
At one point, did David and Todd share with me about the existing power controller, that hopefully we'll be able to create a new power controller, as we each know, it's a part of the equipment put into this system, that they've worked on. The way it was explained to me is, with this old power controller, many of the features of the new equipment can't be used, because of shortcomings in this.
The experts.
Well, you know, I think, in fairness, I think they were probably looking at the amount of expenditure for that power controller, trying to find something that would make it work, without having to have to have any expenditure. It's all been good, I think, in fairness, but it just, it didn't work out.
Todd, you think?
Yeah, the, the old power controller is now off the go. It's been both, it serves as very, what?
How long have you been there?
Ninety-three, twenty years, twenty years. Off the wood.
Ninety-four?
We've seen it about nine years, six years. We don't have any problem with it. The problem with it is, is if it does go down tonight, we're dead in the water. There is no, no replacement parts out there, this company no longer makes this, if it, if we have a problem with it, or don't, we won't be able to answer nine-one-one, we'll have to, you have to put out some ten-digit, admin line up there and get them. We'll have to, yeah, put out some, and then just admin line up there and get them, uh, get out there, particularly if you know and call 911. Uh, that's why this was an emergency funding consideration with State 911 Board. Um, I thought that is the case, if, if, you know, this piece of equipment does fail, it's going to suck and be a big thing. Uh, the, the new vehicle, the new switch, is a digital switch. Um, in our business, we hear the term GM 911 a lot. Um, this, this will allow us to be prepared for that technology when the phone companies here might be like, there is lost perception out there, uh, the tape, sending, sending the pictures, stuff like that, it's really, really bad. So as that comes down fast, we'll be able to take advantage of that. Uh, we'll not be sitting, uh, sitting behind, uh, not be able to take advantage of that technology. Uh, we will be able to do this. I will also say that, um, $544,000, I can break that down. Uh, we have our primary 911 center here, right down the street. We have a backup center, uh, over at the high road to EMS base. Uh, we are paying for two complete standalone switches. Um, if Dr. B, the, the bare building was to collapse on itself, um, we could, we could walk out of there, walk into EMS base, and without missing a beat, uh, keep functioning just the way we are right now. Um, so that or those, can be funded two complete phone switches, that's what we're doing. The other part, the small piece of that is, um, a monitoring, uh, kind of a, uh, wrong. Yeah, monitoring, they, they, they'll sit back and, uh, they'll see problems with their phone switch before we do, uh, and, and hopefully jump on those. That, that's a small part, and the, the big part is the two phone switches.
How much more, how many you, can you, can you, a warranty?
Typically, one year warranty.
We have one year warranty, we, we do have a five year maintenance, uh, plan.
We recommend you write this enough, and we may get this, uh, we have pretty much, pretty much.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendment.
We have a motion to second to approve the budget amendment. As presented, that is appropriating the existing 911 fund balance of 195, 96, combining that with 911 fees.
Just make sure everyone stands for that money to cover. This money is a food, and if you don't get it, it's going to, by the end of the year. If it's certainly needed, half time, you'll get it back.
I don't believe it's spending money if you don't need it, but it's a system, one year old.
Mr. Chairman, the 911 board has, uh, pretty well documented, they've made the 911 board's decisions, but all this, I don't know, it's, it's very, very complex.
They, uh, they're a program called ECAS, and basically they plug into our phone switch, and they'll be able to send us quite a bit of data that we're not able to gather now. How many actual 911 phone calls come into our system per year? Uh, and I know they've posted probably 2,000 candidates called local calls, or something. Uh, we may have a red down here on the front row. Uh, that may be one call, we might be kidding, thinking 911 was one call. So this allows us to track those decisions. It allows us to, uh, track our admin calls, which we have no way of doing with this. Uh, we can somewhat track the 911 calls, but this will allow us to track our admin calls. It will be able to give us how many calls a certain physician, a call taken physician is taking, um, just programming the ECAS program does. What it also does is also listens to, you know, just to make it on pins if you want.
To Bobby Carter, this is his father, he made me buy a skin, oh my, I power you on this bet, I'll just thank you. He told me that I appreciate you.
It was wild, and they're all fantastic.
Oh, yeah, I don't know. You guys are the great folks.
ECAS program, 99, I'm on the state, 99 county, or despite currently, the ECAS program is real. And it's put all our phone switch to allow us to look at the technology.
This is more a way of representation, we have nothing to say, any of this.
Well, no, I'm glad to come in. That was, I appreciate you to have the weight, and I know, and I know, I'll do anything in my heart to make. Make it even in the same places, and then I will think we are able to take town, and everybody feels, I want to say, all that matters. I just got a question, so long asked that this year. Uh, I realize 20 years is a long time in the technology. And I've got one other one, man, take that up, you know, just got 19 points still, uh. This stuff, if we start trying to look down the road and see it through, for us, we don't get the same here. So making sense now, it's 20 years, we're saving it ahead of what we're saying. It's, it'll be something to stay more up with if you want to do it.
That's one thing that we're going to make the request to the State 911 Board, is we have to do it in writing, we can request them, and we can request to carry more than what they allow, which is a 20%. Um, if we're allowed to carry more than that, and we sit down and crush numbers, we don't know how much we need, but they will allow us to carry that much over in our 911 account. But hopefully, in the next five, seven, 10 years, um, technology's forward, wanting to change, or to upgrade our switch, or more of the equipment does, um, just to know this cover's such a rapid pace now. Uh, but, but we will have the money just to upgrade this equipment. They tie your hands for a card on what we can spend this money for. Um, so anything that you're ready basically to take in, in 911 calls, um, we can spend this money on. So we'll be able to upgrade our, that's the reason they do it. Um, they want public safety, especially in our town, to be using the latest upgrades we're available. So they make that, they, they make the money available.
The state's policy, that was one of our legislative go, let, let it go, man. It's return to 911 when it backs down. The generation was telling us, you can return back to this, you make no penalty if you carry money over, if you can build a fund balance, so that it's, it's a citizen discount that pay into it.
Sorry, you set trial money.
That's right. And that's what you used for 911, you can't just use, if I got in trouble with some guy, you'd be involved in ways. That's what, that's what happened. But that was a legislative goal, they got some traction, and there was many other things on, but you may bring it back around.
And what we'd like to do is get this set up on, we actually started this process in 2007. We started putting out some trailers and getting some ideas on what we're actually going to go for our upgrade. Um, we don't need to be in a position where, we just upgraded everything, we upgraded our quarters, we upgraded our CAD program, we upgraded our radios, and everything, our phones, we're all doing it, it was about two or three years. But we, we need to get this stuff started out.
Right, well, it's okay.
Now, 20% of the fund balance, you carry that 20% of the annual allot from the state.
State, so they can make, you know, they, they.
And in the phone, if, if I can foresee, I, I know you're, you're an expert in state, but I can see that if the state's fund balance gets larger now, you're going to see departments like that, they were getting, running, flipping into that larger, and getting that, and using it for roads, which are, they did as well. But, um, we want to do a step down. That's a good job of getting that, 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 whatever.
That's what was.
We need to know that, try to get that fund, try to get that change, or if we can, you know.
You get a discussion? If you're not in all the papers now, I oppose, motion passes. Thank you, Tom, for your work, Todd.
I think I'll do a vote.
I want to go back out there, Christmas, too, I don't see you again.
I think the governor of the Black Tung will have a very good business.
He's been working with the 544.
He's got a lot of work to do.
That's right.
We get, we get turkey, good business.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Jim, we'll be, go about now, and have people take a break, and we'll be here with Mr. Baldwin.
We'll go on.
It's all good. And let me, let me say this, as Chris is coming up, uh, I see Miss Chris is sitting on front row there, and I happen to know, uh, it's her last meeting to cover us, she's taken the job of, uh, doing great, D-Net, and advancing her career. But, uh, Brittany, I'll say, having dealt with a lot of issues over the years, that being a detective official, and reporters, and kind of being adversarial role, but you've been one of those fair people that I've ever met. The news action, felt like I was the meeting that you recorded. You've done a good job. You've been fair, good luck to you, we'll miss you.
When I say that young is what you're going to, what's happening?
She's going to be less than, no, I'm kidding, yeah. But thank you, guys, this, it's been, I mean, three years, and it's great to have you here.
I like you.
It's been a real family, too.
Any motion, we're not going to go. Hope we have input in different places. Uh, Chris is, uh, here to make the request, and more, Chris obviously should do that, and ask the questions. I think Jim, Reed Love, Paul Smoke is here, Chairman Baldwin, and Eric Shields, uh, members of the board.
Let's kind of support our superintendent.
I appreciate it. Go ahead. Thank you, Chairman, for the award, I think this opportunity works quick. Congratulations on your selection of County Manager on the board of work, and Mr. Owen, I don't know if we've, like, been 25 years, but I believe it's been, it's a cool people, I've heard about you.
Most of his education down at my camp, so, you can't say that.
Yeah. But, uh, and also I just, I just want to thank the President for, um, supporting that gas station, particular, uh, differences in self-employment, private, and social assistance, and that brings a notch, a notch for us. My understanding is that you go to $430,000 for the 2% supplement for professional assistance. A few weeks ago, we appropriated that money to the professional assistance, that house about $401,000 for the, for that assistance. My request tonight is that we be allowed to use the remaining, uh, $27,000, the remaining $29,000 of those, uh, 2% supplement for transfer and assistance. We've been providing that, uh, to the principals and assistant principals since we've been, as long as we've been providing to the professional assistance. Uh, we've been doing it out of the system, to conduct the class, and we'd like to use, uh, the remainder of that, the 2% supplement, for the actual issue of those, uh, transfer and assistance. A few reasons for that, number one, we don't continue to provide that to the principals and assistants, we will, if that cuts their pay, um, we've already reduced their, uh, eliminated, we're tribal law. This is a tough time in terms of teachers paid, school administrators paid, or we get that salary. We had, uh, at least two administrators issued to leave North Carolina for higher paid jobs. And Macon County, we eliminated those positions rather than, uh, put these back in, which is increasing burden on, uh, schools that are, that are remaining in that. And the other reason that I support, is that we've got several principals that are near the time, in the higher paid. We want to hold on to them as long as we can, so, uh, we know that eventually we're going to make folks, teachers, and our focus is to remove any of those in this organization, so we're going to be competitive and, and open. Our local employees, uh, currently take leadership roles in the state. But for that reason, I'd like to address that, $27,000, the remaining $29,000, they're used from, transfers and assistant principals. I'd also like this to address that, the remaining $2,000, if you allow us to use that to provide support, uh, groups, um, so. If that costs us about $4,000, but if you allow us to use that, the remaining $2,000, we can help out.
Chris, Chris had asked me about, his plan, I guess, about this, in the call, and, uh, which my first thought was, we, we budgeted that money to this under elected board, which I would sit on, and I used to feel the other way. You have to, which is not appropriate, except you guys, you act to the same boat that we did, so you have to decide. Then you have, after talking to Lori, she felt like if, if, if this board actually had to take action tonight, to allow that money to be used, which is, which is, so that's why I'm, you know, it's money that's harder than that.
You decided to go ahead, by majority, I think, and spend it all, you want to wait tomorrow?
I just want to wait as long as we can.
You need some of this money to wait until then? I mean, that ain't a whole lot of our stuff, but it's been.
It, it is, $27,000, $29,000, probably, it probably would be good, but to hold off through as long as we can, which I think is what we have.
With that, and, and, I think Lori should, uh, basically what you said, to give them a certain kind of latitude, if that's the way you want to spend this money, and if you need to spend it in other places, you want to play your, want to try to down our pay. We give the, the script ten, so we can split four of us, go back tonight, so I make the motion that we just authorized a superend to the, to the balance of the $29,001 money to be spent, uh, in discretionary investments for.
Discretion, scoot. This second, we have a motion to second in discussion.
Well, that was my understanding, we had a discussion previously about whether you could use that supplement or other, we said yes. And we said that's your money, that's what we allocation, and I don't want us to be sad with voting to yield, voting to have managed part of your program, that's your money, that's the way I'm looking, and that's the way I'm supporting it. And not that I'm voting to give anybody a raise, or anybody a supplement, that money was given to your board, and you're the one to make the calls on management.
I agree.
I think the difference was, is that you had always paid the principals that had, that manipulated that another, the second, correct, out of, out of the second pot.
And, and the truth is, I don't want to get you passed up if you don't have a fund balance.
Correct.
There's no pot, there is no pot, they, they spent their money.
Does the board need a budget or anything? I think, you need to take that before, to re-categorize how the money was spent, which you basically say it was appropriate for one purpose, but it's now being utilized, or, is that what it's saying?
I think that's not inappropriate, if this money just had what policy.
Can I address that, Chairman?
Give them the script board.
I think the motion was passed last time we came before your board, uh, another time after with that. My understanding was, the motion was passed that we, upon our request, we were to come to this board and request it in what, what aspects we were preferring to use it, so I think that, but that motion has already been made, Councilor, to answer your question.
And the 14 or what, $29,000 balance that you have in that supplemental allocation, how did we miss that, is that just from people retiring or leaving, or staff reductions?
It is.
Just for that balance?
We're 20 some positions short for over the last year, so, um, we did accomplish this.
If you remember, it was, it was going to take, roughly for $2 million to keep all the permanent positions, we might give you that for 40, so we're going to do that in the state.
And Mr. Bill's motion was to allow Dr. Baldwin, for, and he has, but in the board's discretion, the best use is $29,000.
Any discussion? I'll favor say aye, I oppose, motion, and that's it. Jim, I suggest a short recess.
Yeah, we'll say it all on camera.
Uh, Commissioner Tate was requested to discuss, I've got the waste disposal, how we poop it.
Correct. Okay.
Give you a little bit of history on that.
Give you a little bit of history on this, as you know, the county basically funds recreation for the entire county, Highlands Supplement is their recreation. So they can have some of the facilities up there that might not be offered otherwise. We helped fund their swimming pool renovation project, I think it was something, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, at one of our previous meetings this year. And I was asked approximately, maybe two months ago, by their town manager, Bob Pride, about the disposal of the concrete left over from the pool. If there was a charge on that, or how that worked, if the county charges itself, etc. I said I didn't know, but I looked into it, well, I kind of forgot about it. Last week I got a phone call saying, well, they're ready to dump, and the county doesn't want to charge, or where they need to take it, etc. I don't know, but I talked to Chris Saul about it. Mike, I must you just please correct me, I've known better than this, I'm scrapping the best that I can. Evidently, the solid waste fund is an enterprise fund, so it has to get some funds from somewhere. However, commissioners do have some type of an account with them that they can use to charge the dumping of fees. So Dr. Beattie should be dumping, with my attention, the press.
My understanding is that if the board makes a decision to waive that fee for a way of reason, there is some money somewhere that goes toward, leaves the general fund, and goes back into the enterprise fund. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, please. Well, what the town of Highlands is asking is, is considering, after I also talked to the progressives, they can't take the Highland land bill. So they would be dumping it in, J C trailers, calling it down here, and I weren't told, and I was probably not gonna be an option, that will pay for it, the town of Highlands would have to haul it down here to dump. Well, now, they're thinking that that may not be the best option, they might find a local land bill up there, from a local owner, on the stone wall, and not be able to put it in. So they're investigating this cost, but in the meantime, they asked about bringing it to four of Highlands, so if it's a consensus, it can be considered, so they can take it as an option, and if they do want to bring it down here, generally be charged.
And it's clean concrete, and still in.
Bring in that pain on, but sure, I'm sure we do. And I'm, I'm not sure what happened in Franklinville, I'm not sure if it's a land bill, or what happened to that place, but yeah. It's still, basically, I mean, it's still on town property, it's still a county court, I don't know, I'm not looking for guidance to on this, so we'll pay that to town of Highlands.
Well, I had a situation, I may have been issued some years, I don't remember. I did an island rig, we was talking about, we doing a barrel. Fred Crane told me, we had hard waste like that, they need something to do with, or let Louis Bass Junkyard, he was having that, well, and Craig was out there free. He had a place he wanted to pay over, to be directed, clear of feet. Well, I may, I may call you. What was his name? I may call you. His name is Fred Crane, he owns Crane Brothers Weld Brew. And he also owns, yeah, he's brought up about a month, barrel.
Assuming that falls three, would the county be interested in letting the town? Would the county be interested in letting county, or the town, however you look at it.
Well, the big thing is, it's not to don't, it's a hall, it's a hall bill.
Right, and that's what's, I don't even know, it's gonna be, it may be easier for them, cheaper for them to dump it up there, and that's what they're looking into, if they want the option.
Right.
And it's Fred Crane's.
If it's clean concrete, you can, you can put it.
Clean, everybody will pay if they don't freak out.
Gary Taylor.
But I don't know, that pool, I don't have that, there's a lot, there's a lot concrete there, that pool. Probably ain't getting received. The problem with, over the years, Jimmy, that we found out with the landfill, if you want the commissioner getting involved in that, if we vote to do that, Hall Niggas Church comes up, they wanna dump the shingles for free. Kevin Forbes comes up with some lawn profit, they wanna start dumping for free, you went through that before.
Right, the difference that I see about this is, is this is basically what county wastes, going to county waste facility. But I mean, we don't get rid of it somewhere else, I'm all up for options.
The town on the pool.
They provide the recreation, they're all funded, so I'm not sure how you look at that. I was talking to Charles for sale.
We go to the inside, or maybe like, that's.
And again, I'm all up for options, so if they consider giving them some, some idea, it sounds like we have two possible good options to have done this. And again, I'm not sure what happened to Franklinville, should have asked that, and it's, what happened.
Did they pull back? I mean, if it's, if you got a place to build, like, what I'm talking about, I mean, people like this, if you just, you don't say, man.
But that's a contract question. You think contracts are paid for that?
Well, you sometimes you wait, then you tap on the business, you miss balance with the camp.
Towns do a lot because they want so far on your budget, for a hundred and a half, or whatever.
Can we come back to this? I'm trying to think, I'm certainly up to it, we don't know, we can't handle it.
Forty-three percent.
What's the answer? He didn't want to get involved in it.
That's fine, if we don't want to get involved, that's fine, but I could definitely use your gentleman self to find a location.
I'm sure on my, on anything, what we do, that fits up to this stage, with the money, I don't want to carry a small town, even if it adds to. But I talked to Mr. Byssell, I heard Taylor, I knew that town's got a hall. And he had to come around to it, along the guys like, come back here, or friends, I remember, they even go hall.
It's been like, I could ask him, or, oh, guys.
At least know some word.
You're building a road, driveway, or something like that.
What'd you tell, you asked this new, to, to consideration, you felt like they might be a rock.
I think all the local ones in Highlands have done some, they've, they've, they've done that.
Oh, you did that?
Yeah. But he will be the one, if it sounds like it, too.
Oh, you will, oh, that's more.
Yeah, yeah. Miami. There's a big call down there. Well, I may call you down in the margins, but I know.
But don't shut the door, I think that we're still good, because we are, and that is, we're partners for that, thank you.
We need to get in. I think the town's, they're looking for the best option, possibilities. General, we've got the consent agenda, very short, minutes of November twelve, eighteen, and twenty-six. To make your images, to provide in your packet.
I just want you all saw the tape, taking your emails today, she's there, how much money we collected, and you have to pay taxes, and you try to get pretty lazy.
Motion to approve the agenda. Second, we have a discussion. On favor, say aye. Aye, vote. That motion passes. Paul, we've got three, three seats on the board of health, motion approved. And that would be your liaison, you will pay with it.
Yes, I think there's recommendations there. You're all. Yes. Those are the recommendations of help directly, paying in your end. Yeah, there's definitely a team there. Two reports, one here, one, two, we didn't resign from the board, I think the board plays in with Nathan Redd, Dr. Nathan Redd, I Dennis. And then Dr. Linzo.
You think the county didn't rent, no renter?
No, he's one of them. It's good training, right? But that's okay, we need more Dennis.
A second. Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve, the three board of health members asked for any, any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. We have one seat on the planning board, it's up, I think we give a motion. We have, you have denied, and there was. It's Nick Fox, it's, it's color box.
I like motion to reappoint Jimmy Goodness, since he's an active board member.
Second. We have motion and second, on favor, that motion, very in discussion. As liaison to that board, I'm gonna call Nick Nutter. Your motion, let's get there this first.
Well, I've got to say, that, that fire says these people, if they do too terms on this, then they're held to, to somebody else to come in anyway, and we, the fire, they're trying to. I don't think they come in in order, but.
Any other discussion? On favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Any other allegations? Make a motion. We're expecting this place to.
Billy, yes, yes, I, you know. I second.
Do you think Brian Hatters, Senator? In R. Brian Loo, he's a, he's a, he's a United States representative of the National Association. Left, left, got it from the media here. Haley. Our motion second, we have last year, in discussion.
Is it common not to reappoint a city board member?
I don't know. I think if you have to, you don't have to. If the gentleman's not been reappointed. As.
Is there a reason for not reappointing Mr. Shiggy?
As, as liaison to that board, my thoughts on that are, is Mr. Goodwin's not attended the last two meetings, and I left him a message to talk to him about this, but he hasn't returned the call. I've had probably three calls of people recommending Mr. Laster to be on the board. There's also been a discussion, in my last performance in this board, that the board is people delivering as we can as far as thought process, and we've built up boards. Kilted one way more so than the other.
We're getting the kilt.
Well, now, the reason Jimmy probably has a pity.
The board, the board is not productive if everybody has the exact same thoughts, you gotta have a cross-section of thoughts, that would be our board. My opinion, you gotta have a discussion, if everybody goes, thinks the exact same way, then why not board, not board this guy's.
Got a question. All right. On favor of motion, second, I was saying aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Motion passes. Economic Development Commission, we've got my, one of them, the fair, is that, that's not them though, yet.
It will not be until it's ready.
It checks, and that's Mr. Havington, and I are the liaison, and you guys know.
We will, we will work on that in the January meeting, to my knowledge. But Shetley's basically gotten out of all the boards who own, and I'm not talking to Shetley, he's been serving, but I believe, because the chairmanship is now being turned over to Johnny, who's running American Health, so I think that we'll be searching for a new American Health, that you can see. And that has been closely, we have our meeting as of today. When we were talking to Tommy, when Tommy was back in town.
You guys would talk to me, we, we, we get together. We do have some applications, that folks, applies to multiple boards, I know the Fed will say, man. Big parts we had, Bill, Schilling, we also like to.
Mr. Schilling did not, or he did not.
Okay, I'm sorry.
On the seat board, we could, I know Tommy had mentioned, I can't even call her name, the people that started the pain committee. From the house? Yeah. But anyway, we'll, remember, Havesen will certainly help, give somebody to apply, that we think will.
We, we need a close session.
Yes, we do. Motion to go to close session, under the privilege of client, attorney-client privilege, by this way through.
Same. On favor, say aye.
Any news coming out of the close session?
No, just information, okay. Brittney, thank you.
Thank you. Good luck to you. Happy to be in action.